Six thirty PM council meeting. At this time, we'll stand for the pledge and for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father God, I just come to you, Lord God, just thanking you for what you do for us. Dear heavenly Father God, just thank you for the blessings that you bestow on this city, Lord. God, thank you for the employees that we have and the administration, Lord, that runs this city, Father God, and I just ask special blessings upon them. And Father, I just want to say thank you, Lord God, that you are a restorer, Father God. And so when there is things that go wrong in the city or in someone's life, Lord God, that you are a God of restoration. And I'm just so thankful for that, Lord, so that it just gives me a freedom, Lord, that just helps me to understand how to accept things that happen, Father God. And I just pray, I just thank you for that, Lord God. And I just pray for these council members, Lord God, that we will come together and just always stay united in what is best for this city, Father God. We may not always be united, but Lord, we always are united about what is best for this city. And I just thank you for each and every one of them, Lord God. I consider them friends, Lord, and I just, I thank you for them. And I just ask special blessings upon them. And I just pray all these things in your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And at this time, we will have questions or comments from any citizen that would like to speak? And I see none, so we'll move forward to the consent items, items five through eleven. And if there's any questions or comments about them by any council?
No.
And if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent items five through eleven.
Second. And all in favor? And it passes. And then the election items, item twelve, consider and take appropriate action to approve an order to call a regular general city election. Do you want me to go through all of these or do you want them separately still?
If we can just go through them all.
Okay. And then, and item thirteen, consider and take appropriate action to approve a notice of election to be conducted on May sixth, 2023. Consider and take appropriate action on resolution R dash zero zero five dash twenty-three, ordering a regular general city election to be held on the sixth day of May, 2023, providing details for the holding of an election for two members of the Borger City Council. And item fifteen, consider and take appropriate action on a joint election order between the city of Borger and the Borger Independent School District and the Hutchinson County Hospital District. If there's any, anything Stella that you want to say?
This has to be done by law. So we've got it all on the agenda to get the election started. As you know, January eighteenth was the first day that you could pick up a packet. And the last day to pick up a packet will be, and turn it in by five, is February seventeenth.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? And if not, I'll entertain a motion on.
Would you remind everybody, this is Stella's favorite time of the year?
Yeah.
So, but, you know, if you do have questions, Stella's always there to answer your election questions and, you know, has done a great job for this for many years, so. The elections, you know, so I don't think she gets a lot of credit for that because they almost always go smooth. But, you know, when you're in that office day to day, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of work that goes into that behind the scenes, so. And no, we did not coordinate shirts.
Great.
Just get the memo. But if you make a general motion for items twelve through fifteen, we can, we can make them out of the minutes of reflect appropriately.
So I'll entertain a motion for the four, four items, election items.
I'll make a motion for those items of twelve through fifteen to be accepted.
Second. All in favor? And they pass. And then we're gonna, we're gonna handle item nineteen first. Consider and take appropriate action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Borger, the city of Fritch. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Pardon me. Number nineteen, consider and take appropriate action to approve resolution R dash zero zero six dash twenty-three, appointing two new members to the Building Standards Commission. Mr. Bird?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So due for, due to some unforeseen circumstances, we need two new members for our Building Standards Commission. We received application from two gentlemen, Mark Miller, which is a responsible master plumber, and then Jimmy Head, which is co-owner of the Nut House. And they both have served on previous boards in the past. We feel like they'd be good members again, and we ask that y'all approve them by resolution.
Anyone have any questions or anything? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution R dash zero zero six dash two-three, appointing Jim Head and Mark Miller to the Building Standards Commission.
Second.
All in favor? And it passes. And item sixteen, consider and take appropriate action to cancel or reschedule the February twenty-first, July fourth, and October third, 2023, regular city council meetings. Mrs. Bradlin?
So we, we talked a little bit in our work session about this. So, you know, the twenty-first of February, the mayor and councilwoman Perez and I will be in Austin for the Texas Municipal Panhandle Days, I'm sorry. So used to going down there for TML things. And as we talked about, since we didn't quite get all of the interlocal agreements with the county, your motion that was included in the packet was just to cancel it. But we've asked to reschedule that now to next Tuesday, the fourteenth, at one-thirty, just so we can wrap those up. Then, of course, July fourth, I'm assuming that everybody wants to, you know, not be here on the Fourth of July holiday. So that is generally in the middle of budget season, so we've asked for that to be rescheduled for the following Thursday, the sixth, at our normal four-thirty work session and then six-thirty regular meeting. And then since we were already taking action on this, we normally take action on this later in the year, but the October third meeting will conflict with the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference. And generally, we don't leave a quorum here. But that's after the budget's been adopted, so that's normally a really easy one, just to cancel. So staff, like I said, would recommend rescheduling the twenty-first for February fourteenth at one-thirty, rescheduling July fourth for July sixth at six-thirty, and then canceling the October third meeting. And if you just want to say so moved. I think I'd be particularly.
I move to, move the February twenty-first regular scheduled meeting to February fourteenth. Cancel the October three, 2023, regular city council meeting and reschedule the July fourth regular meeting to Thursday, July sixth, 2023.
Second. All in favor? And it passes. Item seventeen, consider and take appropriate action to award a bid for the Texas Department of Agriculture's Downtown Revitalization Grant project to Plains Builders, the low bidder in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Mr. Bradlin?
And I'd go ahead and read A.
I need to read A, y'all. Presentation of Section Three, Goals and Requirements as it relates to the city's Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Project, CDM twenty-one dash oh-one-seven-two, for sidewalk improvements and demolition of a deteriorated building, to include information on employment opportunities of low and very low-income person as well as residents residing in the community. And I think we have PRPC?
Yes, I'm with PRPC. I'm Amber Gerber. I'm just filling in for Paige Goodell. She is normally your point of contact, but she is out on the Emerging Leaders Conference. The city recently received the following grant award. The award amount is three hundred and fifty thousand. And the project will consist of the installation of four hundred and thirty linear feet of concrete sidewalks, seven hundred linear feet of curb and gutter, eleven ADA ramps, handrails, conduit-related pavement repair, and all associated pertinences. The project will also include demolition of non-residential structure and site clearance. The grant is funded through Community Development Lot Grant via the U.S. Housing Department of Urban Development and Texas Department of Agriculture. As a condition of funding, the city must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. To the greatest extent of feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low-income persons. In part, this means ensuring that Section Three businesses have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project, and Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. A company may qualify as a Section Three business if it is owned by a low-income person, it is owned by a Section Eight assisted housing residence, or seventy-five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section Three workers. This project is expected to include the following contracting opportunities: grant administration services, engineering services, prime contractor for sidewalk reconstruction and demolition. You may qualify as a Section Three worker if your annual income is below the county threshold for your family size, you are a current or recent youth build participant. And I have more information if people are interested. And so the Section Three workers that reside near the project location may also qualify as a targeted Section Three worker. And it's around the service area that is within. The city will track all hours worked on the project based on the three categories of workers. This will require a collection of certain income information, all workers, all Section Three workers, targeted Section Three workers. And if you have more information or have any questions and want more information from me, then I am more than happy to do so.
And the bid process did comply with all of those?
Yes.
And the notification? And so if you remember, we were scheduled to award this a week ago? But we had some questions on the demolition building, which we had to meet, we had to extend the advertised period so that there's at least two weeks after we made those changes and some of the questions, and that's, that's part of that. So it's kind of typical, you know, in federal programs, a lot of these requirements are more, more meaningful in larger projects. This is a pretty small project, but the bid documents, the contractor will be required to keep the, keep the required, the required documentation on all those workers and everything. And so that was part of the CDBG bid package, and both the contractors that put that up are aware of that. And Chad with Park Hills here, if you have any questions about the details of the project or the bids or the contractors?
So they will, they, I mean, Plains will, will make sure that they, they comply with, with Section Eight or?
Plains, Park Hill, and the PRPC, so.
Yes, we are all monitoring all the information. So if you're ever audited, we have all of the information within the grant and everything that we have to submit to TDA, so.
And so what happened, I'm just curious, if something, it does, I mean, somehow it, they don't comply, what does that do to the grant match? I mean, what does that do to us as a matching?
They wouldn't approve it if we were not compliant.
Oh, okay.
So we will be compliant.
Okay, all right.
In theory, if they violated or somebody.
I've just never seen that on a grant before. This is the first time I've ever seen this.
Their rules have changed a little bit to where we have to have the presentation.
Oh.
The requirements have been there for quite a while.
Thank you, okay, I didn't realize that.
So our previous downtown complied with all of this. And you remember, you remember all those things we had to reapprove, like six months ago? The, the equity plans and all your policies, that, that all ties into this.
Okay, I see.
And this is.
No, it's okay.
I didn't, I thought it was something new.
Oh, no, we've always had it, just now the presentation. So the CDBG funds actually come from HUD.
I see.
So it's just a way it's funneled through.
So, you know, it used to be the newspaper was sufficient enough, so now I think, you know, they're wanting it in a public hearing so that you've got, you know, there are people that can't read or, you know, so it's kind of like how we start doing transparency and so many different methods. This is CDBG's push to kind of change some of that stuff. Like I said, the requirements have been there. They were there for our previous grant that, that we complied with, and that one, that grant actually went through a secondary review. So we should be good.
Yes.
I am curious about the demolition of that building. Will that leave like a, a good parking, I mean, like a good lot? Or will it have to be redone? I'm just curious.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So after that demolition of that building, we are planning to do some further development downtown as far as outdoor spaces for that zone, so.
So that will just be an additional?
They'll have to, the contract, they'll have to clear it. I mean, they're not going to leave big chunks of crap, but it's not gonna, this project will not get the nice plaza, or whatever you want to call it.
Okay, so it'll have to be.
But Chad here is the landscape architect that's working on the plaza that the city has budgeted separately. That will come after the building's down, so he's, we've talked about that. Y'all start, start seeing some of that, but we have to get the building down first.
Okay, thank you.
So it'll just be bare dirt for now.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if it would be, you know, because they might use that as a walkaway from that.
And that is the goal, you know, that, that's kind of why that's coming down and he, you know, we have the money for the.
Will it be a while before it gets?
No, it's in this budget year.
Oh, I should know that, sorry. I should know that.
So there, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I can't remember everything.
There's no grant for that, so we have to get, we have to complete the grant project and then, but, but we should.
Okay, makes sense.
We should have that ready to bid later this summer, sometime like that.
This is a fifty-fifty match from the Fed money?
This is twenty-five-seventy-five.
We put up twenty-five, the Fed's put up seventy-five, but it flows through the state of Texas.
Right, well, yeah, well, it's the state's money technically, so as a, as a non-entitlement city, we don't get our CDBG funds directly, so we have to go through either the regional programs, through the PRPC or through the state program. So the state reserves, before the state sends money to all the COGS, they reserve some for their projects. And so the downtown revitalization program is one of those that they hold on to some funds to administer. So this is the second one of these we've gotten, and part of our push to become a downtown Texas Main Street city, which, you know, we've got that provisional status, but once we get full status, we won't apply that they, the TDA reserves this downtown projects into two bulks, those that aren't Main Street cities and those that are Main Street cities. So when we get our Main Street designation, now instead of competing with every other city that's not a Main Street city, we'll only be competing with the thirty or so that are Main Street cities if they put in an application.
And we tend to get preferential treatment because we've done all these plans and, I'm forgetting the term, but.
This one, the plan doesn't necessarily help you with. It helps us with the downtown, the Main Street program, the Texas Park and Wildlife, the Parks Grant is where the plan helps us. Now, it, it helps that we have projects identified in the plan, so when we apply for a grant, we know what we're, you know, trying to do.
Are you working on the splash pad too?
No, we're doing that straight with the vendor.
Sorry.
It, it doesn't have to be engineered.
Well, it was in the weekly, okay.
No, we're, we're, the city is working on that, but.
You're working on the sidewalks and the tearing of the building down.
Any other things, thank you very much.
He handled the parking lot for the last grant.
Oh, okay.
And Chad's been involved on our Tenth Street project, so, you know, your sidewalks and landscaping and all of that that's going in there.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, we've had, we've rained him in a little bit on the Tenth Street project, so he doesn't get all of his trees, but he, you know.
Anyone else have any questions or anything?
No.
Then if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I will just say on the bid, you know, the bid did come in below our OPC, which this is the first project and quite a while that, that I think's been beneficial. So we had originally anticipated a project cost of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus engineering. So this bid at three hundred and thirty is about fifty thousand under that. So we might not actually max out the grant on this one. But it'll be, you know, twenty-five, seventy-five, up to the three hundred and fifty grant amount, but it doesn't look like we will hit the full grant amount.
What happens with the excess? It just goes away?
It, it goes back to the state and then they normally, it gets allocated into the next year's a lot, the next, it won't be the next year because they've already started those applications, probably get rolled into the third year, so it kind of.
So with the bid, it can't be in the overruns, it's three thirty, that's the max, okay.
Well, TDA's changed some of their rules, so you might try and max out all of the funds because if not, if you send any funds back, they're penalizing people for doing that. So we're recommending people max out the funds, so that might be.
We can come up with something.
Which is funny, they penalize you, but then you've got to go amend your budget.
Well, can you make it, you know, like a, put cement down or?
Well, that's what we're doing. What we might do is add another ramp or something. I mean, you, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be much under, because by the time you add the, you know, a hundred.
We don't want to be penalized for being under.
Well, with the grant, with the engineering costs and the grant administration costs, I mean, we're close. I mean, just by rough estimate, we were going to be like five thou, I mean, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's not like twenty-seven thousand.
No, it's not. It's not a lot. And, you know, we could just, you know.
Figure something out. Okay. Do y'all have anything else?
We can add fancy paint to the handrails instead of the.
Doing the dark?
Add a light crosswalk sign by the, by the library or something like that, you know, there's.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award the bid for the Texas Department of Agriculture's Downtown Revitalization Grant project of Plains Builders in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand and thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
A lot of thirty-dollar bid.
And all in favor? And it passes. Thank y'all. Thank y'all, yep. And then item eighteen, consider and take appropriate or take, consider and take possible action to approve resolution R dash oh-oh-two dash twenty-three, authorizing refunding of Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Subordinate Lean Contract Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series twenty-fourteen Conjunctive Use Groundwater Supply Project. Mr. Bradlin?
So, you know, that's always fun with all that lawyer language, isn't it? But, so if you, if you recall, we already approved this resolution last year. It gave the Cremona Board of Directors the authority to refund this bond by July 2022 if interest rates provided a minimum return of three percent. Well, interest rates did not provide that return within the time period asked. So the markets kind of slowed down, so they think they might be able to reach that minimum savings again, so they've asked for us to reauthorize this resolution through July of 2023 to try, to try it again. But it's no different than that, the, the debt savings to the city board would be about ten thousand dollars in our, our payments. It's not, you know, a big impact on us, it is on some of the other cities and it is on the, on Cremona's debt load. So there's real negative side to authorizing this.
Anyone have any questions? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution R dash zero zero two dash two-three, authorizing refunding of Canadian River Water Authority Subordinate Lean Contract Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series twenty-fourteen Conjunctive US Water Groundwater Supply Project.
Second. All in favor? And it's approved, it's, it passes. And then item, we did nineteen, so we'll go to item twenty. Consider and take appropriate action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Borger, the city of Fritsch, and Hutchinson County for the continuity.
Continuity.
Continuity of EMS service.
Well, I can't blame lawyers on that word, that one was my word, so.
Can you just say continuing or?
Probably, you know, you know, but so this, this interlocal agreement is the, is the terms between the, the three entities for continuing EMS service from the February fourteenth deadline for AMR subsidy request to July thirtieth, which represents the end. So the full-term contracts that we're working with, the entities are, will start July one. So going forward, for the long term, we want to calculate operating loss and annual calls for service on the July one through June thirtieth year. So this agreement will cover just a short term, just the five months between February fourteenth and July first, when a full agreement will, will start. So pretty much what it says is the city of Borger will guarantee EMS service at the exact same service levels that AMR is offering now, either through a contract with AMR or through operation with the Borger Fire Department. And so what that means is we'll pay the AMR subsidy and allow AMR to continue at their current service levels. And then once we start, so in case we've got some hiccups or some staffing issues, we, we're not guaranteeing extra service than what AMR is already providing through June thirtieth. So everything will kind of stay as par. Of course, our goal is to switch that service on May fourteenth. So the, the cost would technically be the three months of AMR subsidy, and then we'll go forward. So for the, in this agreement, Fritsch will pay the city thirty-five hundred dollars a month, which is what they're paying AMR right now, so that's kind of their portion of, of AMR's existing. And then with the county, it's a little more complicated, but so what we will do is, at the end of June, we will calculate our operating loss, including the AMR subsidy, and then bill the county for their twenty-five percent. So we calculated the average calls for service for EMS by jurisdiction. So in the last five years, the twenty-five percent of the calls have been in the unincorporated areas of the county. So that would be the county's percentage. So we'll take our operating loss, including that subsidy, multiply it by twenty-five percent, and then bill the county, who will make four payments starting in fiscal 2024. And so we will talk about the first step of what is going forward in the next agreement. So that's just between February fourteenth and June thirtieth. Questions?
We've gone over a lot, so.
Yeah, we've had something on every agenda now for like four meetings, so I'm feeling like I'm getting really repetitive, but we're, we're getting closer to the end goal finally, so.
Then if no questions, we'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Borger, the city of Fritsch, and Hutchinson County for the continuity of EMS service.
A second.
All in favor? And it passes. Item twenty-one, consider and take appropriate action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Borger and the city of Fritsch Emergency Medical Services. Did I miss the Hutchinson County?
No, no, this one, this one is just between.
Oh, yeah, that's right, because they haven't, okay.
Yeah, because, because, so the, the county hasn't approved their ongoing agreement, but Fritsch has. And, and these have two separate agreements because our, our services are a little different. So this is the one with the city of Fritsch, and so what, and, and this starts July one after the continuity period, and then goes, it's technically a five-year term, but it renews after that for an annual basis. So this is, this, these are the terms that we would operate the ambulance service long term. So what it says is we will provide first response EMS service to the city of Fritsch. And so this agreement is for the incorporated areas within the city of Fritsch. And so we will provide that through ambulance staff, through the Borger Fire Department. We will include one ambulance in Fritsch, twelve hours a day. And it, that's worded a little generically, because like talking someone through in Fritsch, you know, with where Fritsch is, seasonally that might change. When the lake's busy, you know, they might want, that ambulance might need to be there at a later twelve-hour period than an earlier twelve-hour period. So we want some flexibility to, to look at calls and, and, you know, I, we decided not to put in that, that twelve-hour period from eight to eight. It's just twelve-hour periods. Now, that is good as long as we have two ambulances in the county. So if one of the ambulances leaves the county on a transfer or some other incident, the Fritsch ambulance will relocate to Borger, because that gives us a more central response to the, to, A, our citizens that are sixty-five percent of the call load, and it's a little more centrally located to the southern and eastern response areas. So in exchange for that, Fritsch will give us a place to house a crew, which they're doing now for AMR, and they've got their old ambulance barn. And then they will be responsible for ten percent of any operating loss. So again, based on our projections, we expect operating loss to be pretty minimal. So there is a minimum amount that Fritsch will pay, and so the minimum amount is, is fifteen hundred dollars a quarter or six thousand dollars a year. And that's to cover some costs that we incur in relocating that ambulance back and forth, you know, to make sure it's there. And of course, you, you know, the council's quite aware of, of my desire for data-driven government and performance measurements, and so we do look for some of our responsibility based on what the data's leaning, when those call times are, you know, when, when we need things. So for the most part, it'll be a little easier because, because there again, we're going to staff two. Uh, so for the most part, it'll be a little easier, because, because there again, we're going to staff two trucks twenty-four seven. So right now, you know, there's only one truck in the southern part of the county after that's gone. So, uh, should be, I think, pretty well straightforward there. It's a, I think, win-win for everybody, and, and, you know, a lot of our citizens go to the lake. So, you know, having a, having an ambulance over there probably just benefits them too.
That local ambulance will be stored here at the fire department?
It, we, we will be working with an agreement with the hospital district to keep using the ambulance barn that's up at the hospital. But, uh, you know, we already talked about that. I know some of the complaints from Fridge, I think we can pretty much, uh, rectify. You know, if the weather's nice, you know, we want that, we want that nice red Borger Fire Department ambulance scene from the highway. And so, you know, what, and, and kind of like we do with every state department, you, you know, Borger Fire's gone to all of Fridge's events here lately, you know, at the lake, you know, so we like, we like showing off our equipment and being part of a, a, a part of the region. And, and, you know, I take, you know, cities, the City of Borger's regional involvement and leadership, you know, very serious, and I think this has been a good opportunity for us to work well with our neighbors. You know, what's good for Fridge and Stinet's, good for Borger, and what's good for Borger is good for Fridge and Stinet. And really, I think this EMS whole process has kind of reiterated some of that, and so I'm excited to see it. I think, you know, it'll be, be nice. People will at least, you know, they'll recognize a a red Borger Fire ambulance probably a lot more than a blue EMS ambulance, but I'm also biased.
And do you want to tell the citizens about the new, uh, director of that?
Would you, would you want Jeff to come up and say hi to the, to the public?
Sure.
All you have to do is say hi, but Jeff Steeg, who was the EMS director in Stinet, has been hired to be our EMS coordinator at the Borger Fire Department. So he's a.
I'm Jeff Steeg. I was the EMS director for the past six and a half years in Stinet, and, um, I'm excited to be here. If anybody has any questions, let me have an answer.
We're excited for you to.
Welcome aboard.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Just glad you didn't have transplant too far.
It's not a very far drive.
That's great. Thank you.
So there's some good things in Fridge. We're excited to see what we can do in Borger. It's definitely, you know, fits our cultural mode, mode and the service level that the fire department's, uh, become known for and that everybody expects, so, you know.
Yeah. And I mean, it is exciting really for another department to be in Borger. I mean, Borger, the City of Borger taking on another department, and it's exciting that we have somebody that knows what they're doing.
Absolutely.
Besides the chief and the assistant chief. They know what they're doing too.
Oh, yeah.
Now we have three.
Now you got three cords.
Now you have.
Easily broken.
Now you have twenty-seven, and you're about to have thirty-six.
Okay, yeah. That's true.
Yeah. A lot. But I believe it'll go well.
We're excited to see how it goes.
So now we probably have Terry reconsidering her.
Okay, so did we, we already approved?
No, not yet. Need a motion.
Sorry, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Go ahead.
No, you're good.
I move to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Borger and the City of Fridge for emergency medical services.
Second.
All in favor? And it passes. And it really is getting pretty exciting.
It is.
I don't know if it's getting exciting for the fire department, but it's kind of getting exciting.
It's getting exciting for me, because it's about to be all on them and not, my part's about done.
That's true. And you did a fantastic job on it too, Garrett.
You did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, and then item, uh, twenty-two, uh, we will be, uh, in compliance with chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Law. The council will retire into executive session relative to section five-five-one, uh, point oh seven-four Personnel Matters, uh, to discuss the appointment, dismissal, evaluation, and/or duties of the position of Finance Director and EMS Coordinator.
Okay, so we've, we are now returning to open session and we will consider 23, consider and take appropriate action to approve the city manager's appointment of Terry Langwell as Finance Director effective February 27, 2023.
Mr. Brown, you have anything?
No, yeah, but Scott's here. We want to thank Scott for his, his time that he's given us here. And, and you know, just to, to point out, I, I have double-checked with Scott on multiple occasions throughout this process, making sure that, that his decision is, is final. And as much as we hate to see him go, I know that he, between his, his years at Nutrien and his years at the city, he's definitely earned a well-deserved retirement. So I'm glad that he's gonna get to go and, and focus on himself a little bit now. But we're also excited to have Terry for the city and, you know, Terry. And I always feel funny when I say Terry and Jerry. It's been like 20 years and I still, you know, I still have our time when I put them together. It's, but you know, they definitely are committed to our community and have shown that over, over their, their last years here in my working with them both. So we're excited to have them on, on board and so.
All right.
That's all I have unless y'all have anything else.
No, we're excited too. And we thank you Scott for what you've done. And we wish you good luck.
He, he, he's got a lot of work ahead of him in that last month, you know, getting, getting, you know, if they're tied up and getting her.
We say the audit for you to finish up.
Well, that's the one thing I'm pretty sure that Scott will be more than happy to pass the auditor on to Terry.
Okay, well then I'll entertain, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the city manager's appointment of Terry Langwell as Finance Director effective February 27, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? And it passes. And item 24, consider and take appropriate action on Resolution R-003-23, reviewing and updating the City of Borga's investment policy pursuant to the Public Funds Investment Act. Mr. Spredlan?
So now that you've approved a new Finance Director, we've got to, you know, take these next two items, which are just kind of updating our signatories and stuff so that we can get that process switched over on our banking and our investment funds. So we did this not too long ago when we replaced Byron on the signature with Deidre. And so now this, everything this is doing is just replacing Terry with Scott.
And that's on both 24 and 25, right?
Right. And so 20, 25 is the text pool, which is our investment fund. And so that replaces Scott, Scott with Terry.
Okay.
And so, so Scott for that last month, he'll get a fancy title like, like Eddie got. So he'll be Finance Director Emeritus. And so I won't make him wear a Latin toga, but we'll give him a Latin title.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion on 24.
I move to approve Resolution R-003-23, reviewing and updating the City of Borga investment policy.
Second.
All in favor? And then on item 25, if there's no, nothing else.
So the same thing, just for text pool.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution R-004-23, designating authorized representatives to act on behalf of the city in all matters pertaining to investment of cities' funds with text pool.
Second.
All in favor? And just to kind of explain why we don't have anything really to do with the hiring of the EMS director, that was Mike. So, I mean.
It doesn't require, it's, it's.
We just wanted to be able to speak to him if we needed to.
Yeah. And so because that's, you know, if you keep in mind that the city charter requires confirmation of, of director level positions that have the independent authority to hire and fire.
Right.
So that's Mike. Unfortunately, that is not Jeff. But I added him on there because this is a new ser, a completely new service that we're not necessarily use, so.
Yeah. And it was great to talk to you.
First response with a near and dear to our heart. So we want our citizens to have the best and we believe we have the best in police fire and we'll have the best in U.S.
And so at this time, I'll take, have a motion on 26, consider and take appropriate action to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.